All the committee of the whole for the Auburn City Council meeting for March the 4th, 2025, the city council should have the minutes from the committee of the whole from our February 18th meeting, are there any additions or corrections of those minutes, if not, is there a move to approve?
So moved.
Have a motion as second, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the minutes are carried forth. Metropolitan Planning Organization Citizens Advisory Committee, this was on our previous agenda and the council at my request has delayed that a couple of weeks and we have been in touch with the members that were previously serving. And so with Ms. Witt not here tonight, it was my responsibility to offer these nominations. First nomination is Ms. Dana Camp, who was previously serving on the Metropolitan Planning Organization Committee and she will like to serve, seek a second term, so I'd like to nominate Dana Camp.
Second.
All right, have a motion as second for Dana Camp, any discussion or questions? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And that motion carries. The second member of the previous group that would like to continue serving is Hunter Smith, Hunter is actually the chairman of this group as we sit here today, so I'd like to nominate, it's Christopher Smith, he goes by Hunter in his work life, but Christopher Smith is on our list, so Christopher Smith will be my second nomination.
Second.
Have a motion as second, any further comments? All right, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All right, and that motion carries forth. Now my third nomination, that's the other three members, as we talked about, one of the members has moved and the two others did not want to seek a second term. So these would all be new nominations. The first nomination is Mr. Robert Compton.
Second.
All right, have a motion as second for Robert Compton, any comments or questions? All right, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And that motion carries. The next nomination would be for Mr. Kirk Iverson.
Second.
All right, have a motion as second for Kirk Iverson, is there any comments or questions? Thoughts? Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And that nomination carries forth. And the final nomination is Ms. Cheryl McGee.
Second.
All right, have a motion as second for Cheryl McGee, any comments or questions? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And that motion carries, and that is five members of the Metropolitan Planning Committee and we, Organization Citizens Advisory Committee, and they will be serving four-year terms and we appreciate their commitment to our community. All right, the next board we have is the Commercial Development Authority, we have three applicants, Mr. Robert Compton was just appointed to the Metropolitan Planning Organization Citizens Advisory Committee, so our first nomination is Ms. Amy Carver-Hall.
Second.
All right, have a motion as second for Amy Carver-Hall, any questions or comments? All right, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And that motion carries forth. And then the next nomination is Kate Hamm.
Second.
All right, have a motion as second for Kate Hamm, any comments or questions? All right, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And that motion carries forth. We appreciate all of our applicants, particularly for the Metropolitan Planning Organization Citizens Advisory Committee, we had a great list there and we appreciate people wanting to serve their community through this forum and we look forward to working with everyone that we have nominated here tonight and will maybe confirm, hopefully confirm later on in the agenda. All right, questions on tonight's agenda for the city manager, are there any questions from the dais for the city manager? All right, city manager, I know we have an additional item here, would you like to speak to that?
Yeah, there will be one other item of business, we'll handle that under item 11A and it's just accepting a sewer easement, it's shown on a plat for, people like to pronounce this street many different ways, Naloco, Nalaco, all kinds of different ways, subdivision plat for property located at two parcels on that street and it's a little late getting to you and it's important to the homeowners relative to a certificate of occupancy for some renovations that have been done, if we could move this forward, so I thought it was a good reason to bring it on tonight.
Okay.
It's a basic sewer easement, there's no fanfare about it.
Okay, all right, this will, so this will appear later on our agenda and we can ask questions at that time if we do have any, okay. All right, anything else from the dais?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to see if there is an interest in this council to explore the subject of council member compensation, not, not for this council, but for the council that would replace this council in 2026, it's been over 25 years, I believe, since there has been any adjustment to compensation and I, I think, given a new council coming in 2026, that, that we at least look at where, where a council's compensation lays in the city in relation to other Alabama cities of our size or proportion and I'm just, I'd like to see if there is an interest to explore that in maybe some kind of workshop form.
Sure. Ms. Crouch, how much time would it take for the staff to put together some comparable information that evaluates and looks at other communities and cities and the compensation for their elected officials, is that something we could get done and potentially have a work session here in the next few weeks?
Yeah, I think we could toward the end of March do that, get everybody collected back from spring break and I think it helps Councilman Parsons, you gave me a lend into some things you're interested in, if other council members should you want to proceed with this, let me know any other data that you would like to have or to look at to make sure we're comprehensively covering for your workshop what you would like to know, glad to do that, I think we have a good idea, but I'd like to also hear what you want, I mean council manager forms of government, similar college towns, whatever it is that's on your mind, let me know.
Perfect, thank you.
Okay, sure. So would it be plausible to maybe try to schedule a work session sometime later in March, after spring break is over with?
Probably the last week in March would be good.
And then could we potentially put this back on our, if the council agrees to do this, put it back on the committee of the whole, the first meeting in April?
You could.
Okay, all right, so that's just a potential plan there, to have a work session later on in the month after spring break and then put this on the committee of the whole for the first meeting in April, anyone else from the council have a comment or thought on this? Okay, is everybody okay with moving forward with evaluating this, studying this and looking at it? Okay, all right, then we'll plan on making that happen. Thank you, Mr. Parsons bringing that up, okay. Any other comments or questions? All right, we are after six o'clock, so we'll go ahead and move into our regular agenda, we certainly, in all call to order, tonight's Auburn City Council meeting for March the 4th, 2025, we welcome everyone that has joined us live, we welcome those that are listening on WANI and that are watching through our streaming services this evening, welcome. With the roll call, Lindsey?
Adams.
Here.
O'Blintz.
Here.
Dawson.
Here.
Griswold.
Here.
Norman.
Here.
Parsons.
Here.
Taylor.
Here.
Witten. Anders.
Here. Would you please rise for the pledge of allegiance and then a moment of silence?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please be seated. This is the first meeting of the month, so with this time we'll recognize our outstanding employees, including our employee of the month.
We're proud to introduce you to our March Employee of the Month and I have a memorandum here from Linda Dinar, our Human Resources Director. I would like to recognize Emily Pike as our March Employee of the Month. Emily began her career with the City of Auburn in 2019 as the Human Resources Administrative Secretary and was later promoted to Human Resources Business Partner. Emily has been instrumental in helping build our employee appraisals and constantly seeks ways to improve some of our processes. Most recently Emily collaborated with IT and the Police Department to help track needed documents to prescreen new police applicants. Emily has a proactive approach to her job and recently attended a software conference to help build one of our internal systems. She attended with a list of questions and came back with detailed instructions laying out precisely what we needed to do to develop, to develop the application. As a key member of our department, Emily has consistently worked behind the scenes to support our employees and various city departments, ensuring that their needs are met throughout the hiring and onboarding process. Her reliability and dedication contribute significantly to fostering a culture of excellence within our organization. Additionally, Emily has gone beyond, above and beyond by volunteering for several employee committees, demonstrating her commitment to enhancing the organization on a broader level. Her consistent initiative and commitment to quality customer service significantly, significantly contributes to our team's success. It is for these reasons and many more that I recommend Emily as the Employee of the Month. Congratulations, we're proud of you.
Thank you.
So thank you to all of our employees who continue to do a great job on behalf of our city, congratulations to Emily for being our Employee of the Month for this month. During the committee of the whole, the city council made a number of appointments to the Commercial Development Authority, the city council reappointed Amy Carver-Hall and then appointed Kate Hamm to serve on the Commercial Development Authority. On the Metropolitan Planning Organization Citizens Advisory Committee, the city council has nominated Ms. Dana Camp and Hunter Smith for a reappointment and then Robert Compton, Kirk Iverson and Cheryl McGee for appointment to serve on the Metropolitan Planning Organization Citizens Advisory Committee and those will be confirmed later on in the agenda. Also, Councilman Parsons asked the city council to, to work on a compensation review and so the city council has asked to work with the staff, will work with the staff and coming up with some information, conducting a work session and then at the first meeting in April, which is actually April the 1st, we will put this discussion back on our committee of the whole to discuss compensation for elected officials and particularly the city council, okay? Under mayor's announcements tonight, certainly want to start off and say, War Eagle, it's great to be in the hometown of SCC champion basketball team and congratulations to Coach Pearl and the team and wish them well tonight and we look forward to a great day on Saturday with Alabama coming to town and hopefully it'll be a great economic day for our community with all the shopping that will potentially go on on Saturday, but congratulations, it's great to be in the hometown, the number one team in the nation and the SCC champions. This Thursday, Ms. Crouch and I will be welcoming Leadership Lee County's Young Leaders, which is a group of young people who have made the commitment to learn more about the county that they live in, they represent all of the high schools in our community, in our county and they'll be dropping by here for about an hour, hour and a half and Ms. Crouch and I will be talking to them about our former government here in Auburn and how things work in our community, they'll also be taking a tour of this building and we appreciate all of those who will be helping to make that happen, but we look forward to visiting with those young people. I want to say congratulations to Renee Waltrip, who was recognized with the Chairman's Award at the Chamber of Commerce's annual meeting and Dr. Dale Crosby, who's recognized with the Spirit of Auburn Award, the Chamber event was an excellent event, a great, again, and congratulations to these two individuals, there were other businesses and individuals recognized as well and I just appreciate everybody's commitment and service to our community. Lake Wilmore has officially opened for business, it's your opportunity to go by the new community center and check it out, you can even work out for a brief time here, a couple of weeks and try it out and see if it works for you, but I know there's been a lot of work that's been put into Lake Wilmore to get it ready, we conducted a great basketball season that finished up this past Saturday, but if folks are interested in Lake Wilmore and want to see if it fits into your exercise and workout schedule, now's the time to go by there and check that out and, and certainly next week is spring break and we just wish everybody safe travels as they might be taking trips and spending time with their family and friends during spring break. Anyone else on the council have anything they'd like to add?
I do.
Yes, ma'am.
I will be having award one, community meeting on March 24th from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. at the Borghen Community Center and the public is invited. And Ron, the announcement you made about Lake Wilmore, does that include that, that pool she was talking, the lady was talking about is open too?
It will be open, to clarify, March 17th is when you can actually, you're welcome to stop by and, and work on your membership, but the, the facility will be open March 17th, we have a, a camp there next week, so there will be a lot of young people running around, we do a camp over spring break, but it'll be available for the public to get their fitness on beginning March 17th, but you can stop by and check it out now and work, work on your membership, you've got to be registered even to come in for a free, free trial, we want to make sure that we're keeping everybody safe, we have proper waivers signed, all the good things that we need to do. And we hope to announce a little more about pickleball coming up, that's the only thing that is not going to be open beginning March 17th, but it could be, maybe.
Anyone else? Okay, we'll move ahead.
If I may?
Yes, sir.
Seventeen years ago tonight, we had a tragedy here in Auburn, Lauren Burke was abducted and brutally murdered from Auburn University campus, found her body out on North College where a monster took her, taken, taken her life, it's something I'll never forget and it's something I urge you to never forget, if you have a child at home, talk to them about going to college and she was a freshman, something that should not have happened, something you never get over, but I don't want her to be forgotten and, and please remember your safety, do the buddy system if you're gonna walk and be aware of your surroundings, talked to her father this week and that's 17 years, she hadn't been home, went off to college and didn't come home, it's something you never get over, so I just, my thoughts and prayers with the family tonight and like around Auburn, keep her in your, keep the family in your prayers.
Thank you, chief. Anyone else? Okay, we'll move ahead with Auburn University Communications.
Good evening, my name's Jack McMurray, I'm back filling in for Evelyn Cherry, our SGA Director of City Relations. Recently, the SGA successfully confirmed all of our new appointed and elected executive officials and our senate has finalized its committees and committee chairs so we can begin work bettering the student experience at Auburn. Currently, we are undergoing assistant vice president interviews for our cabinet and those will be finished up this week so we can get into our director interviews after spring break. On Thursday, our next round of student recruiters will be announced and they will act as the representatives for our school, giving tours to prospective students and showing everything that Auburn has to offer. We are eager for a new season at Auburn in the involvement world as we are going into so many new terms with so many new people serving and looking to make our campus better. We're also looking forward to a much-needed break after two weeks of tests and Auburn students are very excited to get into spring break, thank y'all and War Eagle.
Thank you, thank you for being here. Okay, we'll move ahead to citizens communications on tonight, items on tonight's agenda, if you'd like to speak to the city council about anything that's on our agenda tonight, there are no public hearings, so anything on our agenda that you'd like to speak to the council about now would be the time to do that, we'd ask that you come forward and give us your name and address for the record and you'll have five minutes to speak to the council.
I want to talk about 8F concerning boards, just, just the makeup of boards, I know that Kelly, I believe you and, sorry, Councilman Griswold and.
Name and address.
I'm sorry, Robert Wilkins, 261 Auburn, Alabama.
Denson Drive.
Denson Drive. I'm not used to doing it twice, so I wasn't prepared, I usually read everything, but the, the boards were restructured, I believe in what, 2018 when Councilman Griswold and Mayor Protem put something together dealing with the boards and commissions, is that correct? When in 2018, do you recall, okay. What I want to talk about is I have a lot of people come to, I'm not sure why, but they talk to me and ask me to, to bring up things and a lot of people want to be on these boards, but they're, even when they call the city, they are told that this, this one has two people that are, been on only once and they're not considered at all, they say, well, you know, don't apply because this person's going to get a second term and I, I think that's really bad, I think that each time, and I know it's been brought up before, that we should have it where everybody applies every time and, and they're allowed to do that, I think that's fair, a lot of people want to be on these boards, there's 23 boards, I notice there's 120 different positions and, and I've noticed that 39% of them have four years' term, that means those people run for eight years, there is 39% that has six-year terms, that is 12 years, that's over a decade and then there's only 9% that have five-year terms, which is 10 years and then there's three boards that have three years, which is fine, but I think the idea of running from eight, 10 and 12 years is a long time when there's so much talent in this city and this, this talent is not also for things like, that we have so many PhDs from the university, but we have a lot of people that, I don't know how you do your interviewing, I don't know if everybody applies, they actually get to interview, if they don't, they should be, because sometimes talent is more than a degree or more than even certain kind of experience, it may be the enthusiasm, the excitement, the willing to, to work at all levels and to, to volunteer at a high level and I think these boards are important and, and I would assume most of these people that have been on the board are pretty good people, but let's, let's make it a little more aggressive in the sense of having more people, this city has a lot to offer and in order to offer a lot, we need to make sure it's open to everyone, so the idea of having multiple terms, you might as well make them eight years, 10 years and 12 years, if you want to continue to do that, because you're letting people know, even when you get on the site, it says this person has been once, they're coming again, this, this person's not, I, I, I can't understand, because I have people say, I want to apply, I want to be a part of it, I don't want to be told I don't even have a chance to be on one of these boards or the commissions and so I just wanted to relay this from people and I've had people who've, other people have told them, so it's not a thing where they just come to me, they come to other folks and I do talk to a lot of people and I, I have, you know, fixing to celebrate 10 years, matter of fact, when you said March 17th, I have two birthdays, not one, because that's my doctor birthday, March 17th, so when you brought that up early, anyway, that's all I wanted to do was talk about the boards, I appreciate it.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, we'll move ahead to city managers communications.
Under city managers communications this evening, we have the announcement of one vacancy on the library board for a term that begins on April 15th, 2025 and ends April 14th, 2029. The appointment will be made at the April 1st meeting. We also have two vacancies on the Historic Preservation Commission for terms that begin April 21st and end April 20th, 2028, the appointments will be made at the April 1st meeting, I'll remind you for the Historic Preservation Commission, per state law, you have to meet certain criteria to be eligible to be appointed to that board and that permeates on our website. Also, as I reminded you during committee of the whole, we have one additional item of business relative to a sewer easement that will show up as item 11A. Mayor, you ready for the consent agenda?
Please.
Does any council member have an item they wish to remove from the consent agenda and deal with that item individually?
Yes, sir, Mr. Griswold.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, thank you, I'd like to remove 8D4, please.
8D4, anyone else? Okay, we'll start there.
Item 8D4 authorizes the purchase of one 2025 Ford F-550 truck for the Public Works Department from Stivers Ford Lincoln in the amount of $73,314.
Move for approval.
Second.
Have a motion as second, Mr. Griswold?
Thank you. As, as in the past, I oppose the expansion of our fleet, I see lots and lots of city vehicles all over the place and, you know, every time we hire a new person, we don't necessarily need to hire a new, or purchase a new vehicle and I understand this is not for a particular person, so I'll be opposing the expansion of the fleet and encourage more reasonable use of our existing assets.
Anyone else?
Just a question on how this vehicle, this particular vehicle would be used.
It's, you know, when they're going to job sites and other things, we need to haul multiple pieces of heavy equipment and we only have one vehicle hauling that, so we will be utilizing this in many different ways to haul heavy equipment, I can have our Public Works Director explain what other things it's used for, but we have a lot of F-150s and F-550 has heavy-duty capabilities and so we need it to supplement, we also sometimes need to split our crews, if you have a four or five-person crew riding around in a vehicle together, sometimes we need to dispatch them separately and we also have storm response where citizens are expecting us in the middle of the night to be out removing trees from the road, a lot of that takes heavy equipment and we need to send people in different directions and not have four people in a truck when we need to split two and two.
I don't have too much to, to add to Megan's response, it is to make us a more efficient department, so this particular F-550 is for our maintenance division, so they operate two independent crews, we have one for drainage operations and one for roadway maintenance operations and it is allowed, it is to allow either of those two crews to split their operations for the service requests that don't warrant a four-person response, so that is predominantly how that will be used, but it's also to allow us a little more flexibility in getting multiple pieces of equipment to a job site, but also to facilitate storm response, that's, that's how that asset will be used.
Okay. Any other questions, comments?
Can you offer some specific examples of when you had insufficient equipment to do the job?
Hold on about equipment, we have a lot of heavy equipment, so we're talking about towing it to a job site, so there is.
Correct.
We, we talk about insufficient equipment is not having a truck that can haul that equipment, we've dispatched all that with equipment attached to it and then we've got to take the empty truck, take crew members off of whatever work they're doing to go back to the shop and haul yet another piece of equipment to the site, so that's the main deficiency.
Yeah, it's not insufficient equipment, it's just this will allow us to haul multiple pieces of equipment to and from a job site without having to demobilize one crew, bring it back to the shop, which, you know, from our current facility, if we're on the north side of town, that's a 25-minute commute one way, yeah, so while the crew is there waiting for the other piece of equipment to arrive, because oftentimes we might need an excavator, it may be multiple pieces of equipment though, where it's an excavator, a skid steer and other heavy equipment, you know, this will allow us to bring both of those pieces of equipment to a job site at the same time without having to rely on the other crew to pull off whatever they're doing to assist.
Are there other departments that have F-550 trucks?
Off the top of my head, I don't know, I'd have to poll everyone, I'm sure that Water Resource Management does because they are the other heavy equipment operator and I don't recall if Parks does or not, they have one.
Okay.
They're the workforce of our, our heavy construction operations.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions, comments? We have a motion as second, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
One, one opposition, all right? Motion carries. We have a motion to approve the balance of the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion as second, any further comments or questions? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the consent agenda is approved. Resolutions?
Item 10A authorizes a contract with Gonzalez, Gonzalez Strength and Associates for the Auburn Softball Complex and Wire Road Soccer Complex Artificial Turf Project in the amount of $276,327.
Move for approval.
Second.
Have a motion as second, any comments or questions? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And that motion carries.
I do want to clarify one thing, that's just the design, not the construction piece, so, just beginning. All right, item 10B authorizes a tax abatement amendment and jointer agreement for Core Scientific Incorporated with Obix LLC. Core Scientific will be leasing the Obix facility located at 1571 West Sanford Avenue and will execute a jointer agreement with Obix for the purpose of joining in and becoming a party to their current tax abatement. Core Scientific Incorporated will make a new capital investment over several years of approximately $395.3 million, which was, will result in a total capital investment on that project side of about $424.3 million.
Move for approval.
Second.
Have a motion as second, any comments or questions? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any opposed? And that motion carries.
We have one other item of business. Item 11A accepts a sewer easement as shown on the Loco subdivision plat for property located at 328 and 334 in Loco Drive.
Move for approval.
Second. Motion and a second. Any comments or questions? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the motion carries.
Mayor, those are all the items of business we have for you this evening.
Okay. This time, we'll open the Citizens' Open Forum. If you'd like to address City Council about anything, this will be your time to come forward. Please give us your name and address for the record. You have three minutes. We ask that your comments be directed to the City Council.
Robert Wilkins, 261 Denson Drive. Good evening, Mayor and council members. I'm really, I never really understood politics. It's supposed to be a position of servitude to the people during its tenure, but instead, it turns a politician into a servant of its own political position. Ordinance 3288 Short Term Rental was passed 1,449 days ago by five council members, better known as STR5: Taylor, Griswold, Dawson, Parsons, and Anders. The day after ordinance 3288 was passed, during the mayor's minutes, Mayor Anders said, "We will continue to reevaluate this on an annual basis and make sure that it does not need to be tweeted." And who knows, one day, it might need to be overhauled. Ordinance 3288 was passed on the pretense that it would stop the filth and trash in the city streets. It would stop the excessive noise. It would stop sex offenders while protecting the fabric of our community. All this is nonsense, was based on no doubt or none. But while this false pretense was spread around the city by the elitist attitude of a group called Don't Hotel Our Neighborhood at the expense of the property rights of 151 families composing of an estimated 450 Auburn citizens. Even some members of this council and the group Don't Hotel Our Neighborhood have utilized short-term rentals, and even have some have owned short-term rental themselves. Both of these groups got what they wanted. They got an ordinance 3288. All we want at Auburn's Voice is to improve this ordinance by allowing home stay exceptions for homeowners with homestead tax exemption. There are three conditions to qualify if this was done. The property must continue to be in the homeowner's permanent residence. Second, the homeowner must maintain an active homestead tax exemption from the property. All other regulations outlined would be followed. Everything else would stay in such, such as no multiple homeowners who caused the Payne Street issue. But it would allow Auburn citizens that have been punished for no reason to back doing what other Auburn citizens do for additional income, such as game day parking, 31 days of more long-term rentals, home businesses, yard sales, piano teachers, et cetera. 80% of the short-term rental's income came from Auburn football games, where there's an enormous unfulfilled short-term rental needs. I and 450 Auburn citizens are asking this council to make this minor improvement in ordinance 3288 by playing this exception, by placing this exceptional amendment on the agenda and to vote on it. Thank you.
Who'll be next?
Elizabeth White, 637 Forest Hill Drive, Auburn. Mr. Mayor and members of the council, this afternoon, I emailed you my comments from two weeks ago and my concerns about the ways that the guiding of the governmental departments and programs could adversely impact members of our community. Although you might not consider yourselves a political body, you nonetheless hold elected office, and with that comes power and responsibility to be well-informed, to inform your constituents, who may or may not be aware of the ways they will be impacted by actions in DC, and to advocate for your citizens in your efforts to keep them safe and secure, adequately housed, healthy and well-educated. I had not intended to speak tonight, but realize that before you meet again, the federal government will face a budget deadline. At your last meeting, a number of you spoke as though you have a good working relationship with Senator Tuberville. So I'm here to ask you to speak with him on our behalf. I and many others make phone call after phone call and leave message after message. Several of you intimated that you already have a connection to him. If so, please tell him that as of 2024, there was only one billionaire in Alabama. While tax cuts for the wealthiest of the wealthy might benefit him and the other 759 billionaires living in other states, cuts to Medicaid would put healthcare in jeopardy for 72 million nationwide, and particularly hurt a state like ours, where Medicaid is a $6 billion investment into the healthcare sector, one of the largest industries in Alabama. Without the economic benefits of Medicaid, hospitals, nursing homes, and pharmacies will close. Without Medicaid, physicians would leave Alabama, restricting access to care for every Alabamian. Let me remind you that the people most dependent on Medicaid cannot be here to speak because they are children or elderly. Medicaid covers 45% of all Alabama births and also 45% of all Alabama children, ensuring children in low-income families, children with special healthcare needs, and children in foster care. Medicaid also pays for the care of 68% of nursing home residents in Alabama, providing crucial nursing home and community-based services for seniors and people with disabilities. I recognize that these are not your decisions, but I also hope that as our elected leaders, you will use your influence to advocate for the least of these, the children, elderly, and disabled in our community, whose care would be sacrificed to make the rich richer. Thank you.
Ms. White, did you say you sent us an email this afternoon? Was it late?
Yeah, probably.
Okay.
Yeah. No, and it just had last week's, or two weeks ago's attached.
I just didn't see it before I left the office.
No, that was, I meant to send it earlier, but life gets busy as y'all on that.
No problem.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Who'll be next? Anyone? Okay.
Aunt Mica Daddio, 618 Howard Street, Auburn. I just wanted to come to before the council on this afternoon. First, I do want to thank Mayor Anders. When I called him personally, and he offered his condolences on the passing of my husband, the former City Councilman Bishop A.L. Daddio Senior. I also thank Councilwoman Connie for even speaking to me as well. But I just wanted to bring to you all, maybe before you long, something that had been on my heart that I wanted to address to the council. I don't know, like, the steps and what I need to do is for, is getting, I wanted to get a street name after my husband, after Daddio, because I know the hard work that he has done for the community as well as for the city of Auburn. I know Sam Harris has a part in our ward, and I did check, like, the history, and I know nothing personal against him, because I don't know him myself, but I know that my husband had a lot more weight that he has brought to Auburn and in our ward. So I just wanted to bring that to your attention. I did speak to Mayor about it, and I wanted to push for us to my family, some of the constituents in our ward, one as well, also talked to me about, and I told him I would address the city council meeting, and I would let them know, because I knew my heart, my husband had a heart for the city of Auburn, a great love, a great servitude, and I know this is something that would be, you know, very good to give back for his name and all that he has done. So I just wanted to bring that to you all's attention. Thank you.
Thank you. We're sorry for your loss again. Anyone else? Okay, we'll close Citizens' Open Forum. Before we move ahead and get ready to adjourn here, I just want to say thank you to our economic development team, our industrial development team, and we're proud to have Core Scientific in town and excited about their future with us. Thank y'all for all y'all's hard work to make that happen.
I got a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, on Ms. Daddio's request that she was asking, and she asked, she said, she actually said that she didn't know the process of naming streets. Is that something that has already been discussed with her as to how we go about naming streets?
No, we're also challenged by the fact there's already a Dowdell Street in Auburn, and we have emergency 911 challenges with that, but policy-wise, street names are typically done by the developer. When we named Will Beetner Parkway, which is for a fallen officer, that's a city street that we built. The vast majority of all streets constructed in Auburn are constructed by the private sector and then given to the city, and they choose the names as long as they meet our emergency 911 parameters. So we just haven't gotten very far on this, Councilwoman.
Okay, and the other question is, I noticed that she mentioned Sam Harris Park, and I don't know actually where she's going with that one, but I know there's no other park, because how's the parks actually named? I know this Ann Pearson Park is coming up. She donated that property to the city. And so I wouldn't want to take a park out of somebody else's name and put it in somebody's name. So I, you know, I just want to know how that process works.
Ma'am, we will look up the history of when it was named, and it would have been a choice of the city council at the time. And so we'll be happy to look that up.
Ultimately, to answer Ms. Taylor's question, ultimately, this body would have the authority to make those kind of decisions, correct?
Absolutely.
Okay.
The only time that we've been challenged is when we change street names. That causes challenges for businesses and residents that live on them, and so it's very rare that we change a name of an existing street. Just depends on a lot of circumstances. It's happened recently by the city council, but it's pretty rare.
Okay. And the other thing, I just want to say this too, because I know, let me see, I'm thinking of Slaughter. And when Slaughter ends, it goes into
Mary Brooks.
Mary Brooks Drive. So, and how did that come about? Because it looked like it would have, since it crossed over, it would have continued to be Slaughtered.
Yeah, again, we'd have to do research on that, and staff's happy to do that if that's something the council would like us to pursue. But also, a good bit of Mary Brooks Drive is actually really not what we call right of it. It's just city property. So I don't know what happened, meaning we own a lot of property when you get beyond the church. And so it's an interesting dynamic, but I don't believe, unless Philip Dunlap corrects me, that that happened. Okay, see. All right. He's going to enlighten me about Sam Harris Park later, but yeah, I don't know about Mary Brooks, but we'll have a record of it. We'll look it up.
Okay.
Anyone else on the council have a comment or question?
I do.
Yes, sir.
I would just like to clarify the boards and commissions process, since I was part of our changing that went through several years ago. Previous councils, the applicants were never even made aware, or excuse me, the council members not made aware of the applicants. So we did change that, so that every person up here receives every application process, or application for every board and commission position. So we all have an opportunity to review them and can nominate if we so choose. Now, in general, our nominations are made by our Mayor Protem, and we're all free, again, to make other nominations over and above what she has proposed. And we've done that a number of times. And as far as the automatic renewal of incumbents, that's not a hard, fast rule by any means. It is something that the council has a tradition of doing, and we need to make it, make the public aware that there are serving applicants who are interested in continuing. If they've been continuing, if they've been performing in good faith and good service, then we certainly take that into consideration. As far as interviews go, we had no interview process in the past either. So what we have done is we introduced an interview process for what we deemed the two most impactful boards and commissions in the city, and it was the Planning Commission and the Board of Education. We do go through a interview process. All applicants, including incumbents, are required to apply for every open position. So just because you're there, it doesn't mean you get the chance to just cruise. You still have to apply, just like everybody else. So I just want to make those points. You know, we did make some procedural improvements in our boards and commissions process, and it may not be enough for everybody's enjoyment or appreciation, but we did make an attempt and try to make that more fair, more open, and more comprehensive than in the past.
Thank you, Kelly.
And that also, the March the 24th meeting that I'm having at Borgon is basically going to, is, I have had several people that ask me about these boards and commission and the diversity of them, the inclusiveness of them and that type of stuff. So I've got a panel of people, including the mayor, that I've invited to come out and talk about the boards and the commissions and the processes, so that everybody understands. Some people say that they don't get, you know, they don't get the application, and they don't know how to go about. So those are the things that we're going to talk about. And so if you're really interested in how this process go and really want, I guess, your voice to be heard or whatever, so that the council know the concerns of the community, please come out on March the 24th to the Borgon Community Center, because I have invited a panel of people to come out. And I've included the mayor, and you got a lot of knowledge of it too, so I hope you'll be there. So I just want to throw that out there, because that is a question that has been coming up.
Anyone else?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. I have just an item that I'd like to get clarified. This Library Board Appointment 7A1 is the second open appointment that we're considering at this time.
So that is, you're considering you've got one application set in process that will go for the next council meeting? For, and somebody resigned because they moved out of the city limits. That's an unexpired term, so that term lasts, I don't know, it's a little over a year, a year to two years because it's an unexpired term. And then the second appointment you do, that I announced tonight, you do have an incumbent who is eligible. And I'll clarify, when the staff is responding to people, I respond every day to people asking about boards. I don't tell them, well, there's an incumbent, you don't have a chance. What I do say is, they will often ask, is there an incumbent that's eligible for a appointment? We'll definitely tell them that, and that's staff's goal. We also don't want people going in blind, thinking, well, why didn't I get this? Because you actually appointed somebody to a board tonight who's applied a ton and has been wondering why they couldn't, and then they were appointed to a board tonight. And so we're very careful with that. That's the council's pleasure, what Councilman Griswold had to say. However, we do like to let people know there is an incumbent who is eligible. Sometimes they'll ask if they're reapplying. We will tell them if the incumbent has told us, yes, I intend to reapply. We do let them know. We're trying to be very straightforward with people applying. However, I always warn everyone, the council will do what it chooses to do, and you can appoint whomever you want, as long as they're qualified at any time. And so that's, this is your policy that you set up, and you can do it how you wish. But you do have two Library Board appointments coming in back-to-back meetings. One for a completely vacant position. It's vacant now and has been vacant, and then one of an incumbent in April.
You know, I would just say that, serving on boards and commissions before I ran for City Council, you know, a lot of times you serve one term, and you're just starting to understand the dynamics of that board and commission, how they operate, the decisions you're making, what goes on, the nuances of that department. And the second term is when you really can execute some good strategies, bring some great ideas to the table, and be really more helpful. And most of the time, the people that end up chairing those boards are the folks who have served one term. They're in their second term of serving. You just tend to be a little more valuable because of the experience. And so, you know, I always tell people, if these folks are committed, and they show up for the meetings, and they've done their homework, and they're investing in what they're doing, and they want to serve a second term, I think it's a great idea to consider them strongly, because they offer a lot with the experience and the things that they've learned in that first term. So that's my perspective on that. Anyone else? Okay, is there a move to adjourn?
No move.
Where adjourn?